Okay, it is seven forty-eight P M. Come out of executive session, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Simmons, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Decker. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. We have one item for executive session, and that is to add a section to the memorandum of agreement for the building official. What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Simmons. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, thank you. In regular business, Mr. Foster, Police ADA.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve the permanent civil service appointment of Sergeant Thomas Kimmichek to the rank of Police Sergeant effective August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. Make the motion?
Motion by Mr. Foster, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Miller. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.
And congratulations, Sergeant Kimmichek. I know he's doing a fantastic job, and she's been giving us updates. At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve the Governor's Traffic Safety Committee grant to participate in the Police Traffic Services Program, Buckle Up New York, and the Child Passenger Safety Seat Program. This is going to be a total for the Police Traffic Service Program, Buckle Up New York, eighteen thousand, two hundred and forty dollars, and for the Child Passenger Safety Program, totaling two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Make a motion?
I have a motion by Mr. Foster, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newhauser. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.
And in summary, these grants will provide overtime reimbursement to participate in the state and federal traffic safety enforcement wave, seatbelt, education enforcement, local traffic safety initiatives. And at this time, I would like to make a motion to accept the two thousand and twenty-two Port Jervis Police Reform intervention collective progress report that we've all received.
Motion by Mr. Foster, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Miller. You didn't receive it in your packet, because if you see it, it's really long like this, but you'll notice that on the agenda is a link. You can go to that link, it is on the website, so you can view it and print it there.
Yeah, some of us, most, most of us.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, thank you.
Yeah, the police chief at the committee, Police Committee meeting gave most of us all these copies. And just for you at home, if you don't know about this, this was an executive order signed by former Governor Cuomo that required local government to develop and plan to improve strategies, policing procedures in the department to work with the community. And what we've been doing is we had to conform, and we've been taking a look at creating a citizen police advisory group that we've done, also promoting practices on de-escalating training policies, the active bystandership for law enforcement, enhancing officer wellness, and improving the department's physical facility, and began the process of implementing body worn camera program as well. The Port Jervis Police Department has urged parents to teach their children some simple safety tips before they head back to school. So on Tuesday, September sixth, is going to be the first day of school, so hundreds of children will be walking to and from school and to the bus stops. Everyone who drives has a responsibility to be especially careful during the busy time of year. So to help protect children, parents, and adults, we urge and educate our students with the following pedestrian safety tips. Let us provide a look always at the crosswalk, cross only at corners of crosswalks, obey police officers, school crossing guards, be especially alert in bad weather, do not run or play near traffic, motorists, please drive with caution, don't be distracted, keep your eyes on the road, and stay off your electronic devices while driving, don't text and drive, and please yield the right of way to pedestrians and crosswalks. And also, just a reminder that the Port Jervis Middle School will be closed this coming year, is going under construction, so all middle school students will be going to the two oh nine campus, so please be advised going down Kingston Avenue. And our next Police Committee meeting is going to be on September fifteenth at six fifteen, right here in the council chambers. ADA has not met yet, but we will be meeting on September twenty-first, five P M, right here in the council chambers. And like Laura said, what a great time, the Italian Festival. Comedians were hilarious. Sounded like I was sitting at my grandmother's kitchen with her sister and so forth, Italians. Great Sal and Christine also singing. Everyone had a great time. It was very, very overwhelming, emotions and so forth, everybody had a great time. So, very good. And that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Miller, Finance.
Thank you. All right. We have bills to be paid. From the General Fund, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. From the Water Fund, seventy-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-two cents. From the Sewer Fund, thirteen thousand, twenty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. From Capital Fund, whoops, sorry, from Capital Fund, thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. From Trust and Agency, a hundred thousand, seventy-six dollars and ninety-seven cents, for a total of five hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ten cents. Some larger items to note from the general water and sewer funds. For our New York State Employees Health Insurance, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy cents. For Global Montello Group, twenty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and four cents. For Orange Rockland and PJ Solar, twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-six cents. And for Schmitz Wholesale, eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-one cents. Some larger items to note from our Capital Fund. Manufacture Technologies for Sewer Relining, fourteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-six cents. For the Division of Homeland Security and Emergency, fourteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. And for FAR Engineering, three thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and two cents. So I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills.
I have a motion by Ms. Miller, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fuller. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, thank you.
Finance last met on August seventeenth, and we discussed the second quarter financial report, and we also discussed the New York State Senior Citizen Homeowner Exemption Program. I'd like to make another motion to approve the June and July Finance Committee minutes, because I'm a little behind.
Should we do them separately? So I have a motion for the June, by Ms. Miller, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. And for July, Ms. Miller, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Siegel, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.
Okay, the next Finance Committee meeting will be September twenty-first at six P M here in the council chambers. Also have a few resolutions. I would like to make a motion to amend the income allowed in order to match the Port Jervis School maximum income and sliding scale for the R P four, six, seven Senior Aged Exemption Program.
What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Motion, second by Ms. Miller, second by Mr. Foster, discussion?
This is what, this is regarding what we discussed at the Finance Committee meeting?
For the seniors.
For the seniors, in order to make the program more accessible for a larger amount of people.
I think the meet, I think the whole amount was like thirty thousand dollars.
It's thirty-two, it would bring it to thirty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. And this is review of that conference.
Was this in the, was this in the, is this over again?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're just raising, we're just raising the limit of what senior exemptions are.
So more people who are eligible.
So more, so more seniors are eligible.
Are we amending the code?
We have to amend the code. That's why I understand.
Sorry, what?
We have to amend, we have to go to code, because of the, it's very specific as to what can be, what is considered a exemption, so code.
We're not changing the exemption, we're just changing the number.
We can't change the number, so we change the code, because the code is.
Okay, so then we'll hold off.
The thing is, we may need to amend the code.
It was my understanding that that's what needed to be done.
That has to be done by local law.
Correct. I haven't gotten to extending the code yet.
All right, so then we'll wait till the next code, and then what we'll do is at the September meeting.
Just, just for discussion purposes, so it was my understanding that this is no different than like when we change fees. Like when we just, all we have to do is make a simple.
But it's not a fee, it's an, it's an amount.
It's a limit.
A limit, yeah. I think that's different.
It's a ring.
The code section refers to star exemption, and New York State changed what star exemption means?
Yeah, that I, yes.
So that's why we have to go back to code to make an adjustment to the local law of three of two thousand and thirteen?
Three of two thousand and thirteen.
I'm pretty sure that it, yeah, two, and we have to change that first before we can up the exemption for the seniors.
Yeah, so.
Right.
Is it appropriate to set up a hearing tonight and have this written go within the meeting?
You want to do that?
Yeah, okay, so I'll add my motion to just at a public meeting regarding, public hearing, sorry, regarding the code for R P four, six, seven.
You'll have to input the, what the local law is. Okay, and Regis, show the man your second?
So you're gonna have a public hearing?
You're gonna hold a public hearing until when? Like, do you have, do you?
Next?
For the next council meeting?
The next council?
September twelfth.
Okay.
And that would give us time in code, do? On the seventh, okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed, so carried?
So that was September twelfth at six thirty.
I'm sorry, six thirty-one.
Six thirty-one.
All right, I also have a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis authorizing revisions to the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget, whereas on December twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, the Common Council approved the budget for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. And whereas the Common Council seeks to amend the approved budget for the twenty, for two thousand and twenty-two budget requires some modification, now therefore be it resolved, the attached budgetary transfer by authorized. So I'd like to make that a motion.
Motion by Ms. Miller, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Foster, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.
And I believe that is all I have, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fuller, Fire Emergency Management.
Thank you, Mayor. We received the emergency procedure plan for City Hall. This was a joint effort by the Police Department and the Fire Bureau. I would like to make a motion that we accept the emergency procedure plan and place it into effect.
Second. A motion by Ms. Fuller, second by Mr. Simmons, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, thank you.
And Fire and Emergency Management has not met since our last meeting. We will be meeting tomorrow night, Tuesday, August twenty-third, here in the council chambers at six P M. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Mann, Tourism I D A.
Thank you, Mayor. Tours had last met on August tenth. They finalized the arrangements for the Italian Festival. The Twenty-Ninth Annual Four Foliage Festival will be held on Sunday, September twenty-fifth, from ten to five P M downtown. Vendor applications submission have a deadline of August twenty-fifth, which are available at the city clerk's office, the city website at W W W dot Port Jervis M Y dot gov, or you can email Tourism Chair Laura Meyer at tourism@portjervismy.com. Chris Kendall Market will be held on Sunday, November twenty-seventh, from ten to six P M. Applications are also available now. Monsters on the Mountain will be held on October fifteenth, from six to ten P M at Elks Park's Park. The next tourism meeting will be held on Wednesday, September fourteenth, at seven P M here in the council chambers. Thank you to all the tourism board volunteers for their hard work at the Italian Festival, and a huge thank you to Laura Meyer for her dedication to the city. We're fortunate to have her. Our D P W, Police, E M S, and Rec for their assistance and support during the event. I D A has not met since their last meeting. Their next meeting will be held on Monday, September nineteenth, at six P M here in the council chambers, and that's all, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Planning zoning, Mr. Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. Planning Board did meet this month. Up until this meeting, a public hearing remained open for both Rumshock Veterans Foundation and Acupoint Touch, Herb, and Meditation. The public hearing was closed. Both the Seeker and the Project were approved for Acupoint Touch, Herb, and Meditation. In regards to the Rumshock Veterans Foundation, the Seeker was approved, but there was a motion to table the approval for the project until the next Planning Board meeting due to some ongoing concerns. Also, there are no other pre-submissions at this time. Next Planning Board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September twentieth, at seven P M here in the council chambers. The zoning board did meet this month, and there was a pre-submission for variance to allow an above-ground pool in the side yard at thirty-six Buckley Street. Due to some questions and concerns regarding the site plan, it was determined there would be a continuation of the pre-submission until the next zoning board meeting. The next zoning board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September sixth, at seven P M here in the council chambers, and that's all I have for that.
Thank you, sir. And you have Mr. Livingston's?
Yep.
D P W and C D A?
D P W update. The week of September fifth, all garbage and recycling will be one day late. All paper pickup will be on its normal schedule. The two thousand and twenty-two garbage schedule is available on the city website at W W W dot Port Jervis M Y dot gov, or by emailing the D W, D P W office at dpwclerk@portjervismy.gov. Every Monday, leaf pickup will resume until completed. Sewer relining will continue in the fourth ward. Updates for lining will be on Nixel. Road milling and paving will start on August twenty-fourth and go for a week on East and West Main Street and Ferry Street. As far as the voluntary water restriction, that will be ongoing for the next three weeks. And the next D P W meeting is scheduled for September sixth, at six P M here in the council chambers. For C D A, the C D A will meet this Wednesday at seven P M at Riverside Park, and that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Simmons, Code.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next code meeting will be Wednesday, September seventh, at six thirty P M here in the council chambers. And I'd like to thank Laura for an outstanding, Laura and the tourism people for an outstanding job with the Italian Festival over the weekend. And six years ago today, at nine thirty-two in the morning, I lost my brother Dennis, and I miss him every day, but I always have him, right here with me. Great guy, and he's missed, thank you.
Thank you, sir. He was as tough as you are, too. He was a good guy, thank you. Ms. Newhauser, Recreation?
Thank you. The Recreation update. The Youth Center Recreation Room is open at eleven A M to three P M, Monday through Friday until Wednesday, August thirty-first. The Recreation Room will be closed September first, second, and the fifth. Beginning September sixth, we will switch back to our after-school hours, which are three P M to six P M. The last free outdoor movie of the summer at Riverside Park will be held this Wednesday, August twenty-fourth, at approximately seven thirty P M. The movie Sing To will be shown. Bring a chair, wear a blanket, and some snacks, and enjoy. West End Beach is closed for the season. Swimming is prohibited at the beach. The next Recreation Commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September twenty-first, at seven P M at the Youth Center. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Housing Veterans, Mr. Siegel.
Thank you, Mayor. The Housing Authority, last meeting was Tuesday, July twenty-seventh. The next meeting is scheduled for tomorrow at seven P M at Hillside Terrace. For the veterans and others, the Wall that Heals is a three-quarter scale replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Washington, D C, that travels around the country. It honors the over three million Americans that served in the Vietnam War, and has the names of fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-one men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice in Vietnam. Excuse me. It will be in Middletown from September fifteenth to the eighteenth. It's free, it's open twenty-four hours a day, and it closes on Sunday at two P M. If you haven't seen the, the wall, or you want to see it again, and honor those who didn't come home, this is a great opportunity to do so. Again, it's September fifteenth to the eighteenth, and it closes at two P M on Sunday. And we had it in Matamore's a few years ago. It's not much different than actually being in Washington, so I would encourage those that have not gone there, or those that would like to go again, to go there. Also like to encourage any veterans or others that would like to help out with the memorial, any of the days or nights, there's a, if you go to T H W, Middletown, I think it is, org, dot org, you can sign up to help. Also, pardon? Huh? Where are Middletown? I believe it's at the American Legion, but I'm not sure. I'd have to double-check. Or it's, they have a whole webpage, so it's on the webpage, but I'll post the exact location. It was a little confusing as to whether or not that was the people that were sponsoring it, or that was the location of it, but I'll get that. Twenty-two veterans commit suicide every day. There's a new Veterans Crisis Line phone number, nine eight eight. Nine eight eight replaces the old number of eight hundred, two seven three, eight two five five. That still works, but it's anticipated that nine eight eight hotline will be easier to remember, and this will allow more people to reach out if they need help. If you know someone needs help, and they do not have to be a veteran, just dial nine eight eight for help, and somebody will be there twenty-four hours a day. It's becoming even greater than twenty-two veterans a day, so in addition to the veterans, of course, we have those others that are contemplating suicide, and they're welcome to dial nine eight eight also. Upcoming Senior Club meetings are August twenty-fourth, September fourteenth, and September twenty-eighth at one thirty at the Fellowship Fellowship Hall in West End. An access aid is still not on air, we're waiting for Spectrum to reinstall the transmitting equipment in City Hall. Frontier did their thing, and now it's up to Spectrum, so we apologize for any inconvenience, but it's beyond our control. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have our second public comment. Nobody? Thank you. Okay, first, Italian Festival, fantastic job, bigger, better, and, and a lot of rave reviews on the entertainment of, by a lot of people, food, the selection of food, and everything was fantastic. And like you said, hopefully we'll have the park done by next year, and, and we'll have a new stage and a sound system, and it'll look really great. But thank you, thank you for all your endeavors, and thank you to council members, because council member, a lot of people didn't know, several council members here came on Friday to help set up, so thank you all very much for doing that. I need to set here, for, in the council room, for Monday, August twenty-second, we are scheduling the D R I Downtown Revitalization in the New York Forward. Public, twenty-ninth. All right, sorry, that's, I, yeah, twenty-ninth. Sorry, next week, next Monday, August twenty-ninth, at seven P M, for the public input session for the D R I in the New York Forward. So come with your ideas. The ideas would have to entail mostly downtown, to the turntable, a little past the turntable, as well as going up to Jersey Avenue? And Riverside Park? Okay. That's that. I will entertain a motion on the Farnham House haunting. As you all know, that was held off until we had this meeting. I sent you all the notes that I had, all of the departments that are involved were there, they are aware that we will go ahead, and it can be stopped by our fire inspector or fire chief, police chief, if they feel that it is not safe. What is your pleasure?
Under those conditions.
Motion by Mr. Siegel, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Simmons, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, thank you. I am, I have been requested to reappoint and am reappointing Mrs. Joyce Klimkowitz to a five-year term on the Board of Assessment and Review. Her term expires on September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, so the new appoint, appointment will be from ten, one, two thousand and twenty-two, to nine, thirty, two thousand and twenty-seven. Next, we have a letter from the Town and Deer Park, we get this every year. The Town and Deer Park, the following year after September eleventh, took on the respect deserved to those brave individuals from September eleventh that gallantly fought to help others. And so on behalf of the Town and Deer Park and the Town Board, I have a letter from Flo Santini that would like to us, join us, ask us to join them in the memorial contribute, in the memorial tribute to our September eleventh victims. The service will be on a Sunday, September eleventh, eight thirty A M, that is the time when the first plane hit the World Trade Center North. Service will be held at the Town Hall, four twenty, Route two oh nine. This is the twenty-first anniversary of this tragedy to our country, and we are inviting all that would be willing to share at this moment. Deer Park's memorial site was greatly enhanced twelve years ago with an I-beam artifact from the Twin Towers, along with two flags that were flown at the World Trade Center site. So if you can't make it there on September eleventh, definitely go up and look at that memorial that they put together in front of Town Hall, and, and a lot of the flag of honor was donated by Senator Bonnisek. So everybody is more than cordially welcomed from the City of Port Jervis and the Town and Deer Park. I need to entertain a motion to accept the lowest bidder, which is ground control excavating at twelve thousand, five hundred. Our engineer from FAR Engineering contacted them, and Chad Kinney of Copper Works, who is a licensed plumber, will be their plumber. In theory, they should be able to do forty-four water services. What's your pleasure?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Simmons, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Decker, discussion?
Is that ground control, the major Tom?
I, I, I'm just gonna ask for one minute, I just need to ask Corporation Council something for my outside.
I know, you got, you got up and left. Wow, brute. Got banged up. Is he sitting in a tin can? Beam me up, Terry.
I just went doing that ground control.
And then I went back in. I was like, oh.
I understand.
Did you see it? That was hysterical. That's a Facebook picture. I don't know, I think it was blackmail.
Did you see his face? He was like.
Okay, folks, I'm gonna actually recall the motion.
Yes.
For this, do I have a motion?
Mr. Simmons will withdraw his.
He's gonna withdraw his motion.
Yes. Yes.
Do I have a motion? For the, no, no, for this.
I withdrew my motion.
He withdrew his motion. I make a motion to Mr. Foster and.
Mr. Decker, your second?
Okay. Uh, discussion?
Yeah, the choice of the plumber, was that bid out, or how does that work?
That's the choice of your lowest bidder.
Okay.
They, they choose that. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I have a resolution. Uh, this I did discuss with you. Um, this is a resolution of the Common Council, uh, for this, oh, no, I'm sorry, this is not the one I'm talking about. Um, this is the submission of the twenty twenty-two New York State D R I and New York Forward grant applications. Um, whereas the City of Port Service is seeking funding to support projects deemed important to its citizens and economic development, development, and whereas now open and due by September twenty-third, by four P M. Or two grant opportunities, which include New York State D R I Downtown Revitalization Initiative Round Six for one ten million dollar award per New York State Regional Economic Development Council. And new this year is New York Forward, which is N Y F grant program, which offers either two four point five million awards, or one four point five million award and two two point two five million awards. And whereas through only one grant may be awarded, communities may apply for combination of opportunities, including the New York State D R I and the N Y F. And whereas, the letter of intent to apply as approved by the Port Service Common Council on August eighth, twenty twenty-two, was submitted on August tenth, twenty twenty-two, and was subsequently approved by the Mid Hudson R E D C Technical Assistance. And whereas, a required public input session and city website input that as appropriate will be added to the final application are being scheduled. Now therefore be resolved that the Common Council of the City of Port Service hereby approves the submission of a New York State Downtown Revitalization Initiative Round Six application for up to ten million dollars, and a concurrent New York Forward application of up to four point five million dollars by September twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, four P M. And that the mayor and the Port Service Community Development Agency Executive Director or other person designated by the mayor is authorized to execute any and all documents in connection with the submission. Uh, what's your pleasure? Motion by Ms. Millard, or second by Ms. Mann, discussion? Which one is this? We did all of them, right? We've applied for all of them?
The D R I we applied for previously.
Right. Yeah, this is the first time for New York Forward, right? Okay. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. Okay. This is in regards to that. So on the agenda, it says potential special meeting, uh, advisement for a New York State E F C W I A grant, uh, application, but we were able to get the, um, the resolution, uh, today from our environmental attorney. So I am going to read the resolution, so we don't have to have a special meeting. Alright, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Port Service, whereas the city has received a commitment letter dated March second, twenty twenty-two, from the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, also known as N Y S E F C, for hardship assistant loan in up, an amount up to twenty million dollars at a zero percent interest for the purpose of implementing C W S R F project number C three dash five three nine six dash zero three dash zero zero, also known as the sewer main re-lining and manhole rehabilitation of portions of the city sewage collection system. And whereas, under the New York State E F C C W S R F program, the city is eligible to apply for a New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, W I A A grant, for up to twenty-five percent of the New York State E F C twenty million dollar loan commitment. That is up to five million dollars. And whereas, the Common Council desires to reduce the city's E F C loan borrowing by any amount of the W I A A grant funds that can be obtained from the New York State E F C. Now therefore be resolved that the Common Council of the City of Port Service hereby approves and directs that the application deadline of five P M. Friday, September ninth, twenty twenty-two, the city's Executive Director of Community Development Agency, the Director of the Department of Public Works, the Clerk Treasurer, the City Engineer, and the city's Environmental Counsel, as well as Corporation Counsel, shall complete the submittal of the W I I A grant application to the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation on behalf of the city. And be it further resolved that the mayor or his designee is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all applications and documentations required by New York State E F C to effectuate the intent of this resolution. And be it further resolved that if the New York State W I I A grant is approved, the mayor or his designee is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all grant contract documents, including but not limited to financing documents with N Y S E F C to obtain a W I I A grant. And the Common Council hereby approves the expenditure of all reasonable and customary sums to close on the grant funding transaction. So, your pleasure, Mr. Simmons? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Foster, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
I have an answer to that question about the Wall that Heals.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, the Wall that Heals, along with a mobile education center, will be in Middletown from September fifteenth to the eighteenth, at Our Lady of Mount Carmel Church at ninety Euclid Avenue in Middletown. That's Our Lady of Carmel Church at ninety Euclid Avenue. I hope I spelled that, said that right.
You.
In, in Middletown, so that's where it will be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, just getting back to the, uh, grant application, do we need to make a motion to appoint the city engineer as the engineer for that? No? Okay. Alright. If we don't have any other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So, second by Mr. Foster, second by Mr. Segal, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you.